Called to order a special meeting of council of the town of St. Andrews. On Wednesday, August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty at seven P M. Recording of attendance, I note that all members of council are in attendance with the exception of councillor Bishop. Which end this evening. I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll move, your worship.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and could I have a second for that motion, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Akagi. All in favor of approving the agenda as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved.
Your worship, just to note, I don't think Council Goomshaw returned. So it's councillor Goomshaw and councillor Bishop.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you, Mr. Spear. So councillor Goomshaw is, perhaps he will join later. Otherwise councillor Goomshaw is also not present. I will now move to disclosure of conflict of interest. On any matter before us tonight. Hearing none, we can move on and we will move to a presentation. To be given by Chris Spear, our chief administrative officer and treasurer. Presenting the preliminary two thousand and twenty-one budget for the town of St. Andrews. Mr. Spear?
Thank you worship, just bear with me for a second. Not a problem. My daughter's not watching, I'll be in big trouble. I'm not sure, I think Mr. Miller might be the only participant watching us tonight, but I'll take the time to go through it all. In case there's discussions later. So everybody, thank you for this opportunity, your worship and council, to discuss. The budget moving forward. This is really just not to bring any figures tonight, just to bring some ideas and some comments about where we are and the process. And to really open it up to the public, to provide any input they would have of what they would. Like to see for the town moving forward. So on the tonight's agenda, we'll be talking about the purpose of the municipal budget quickly, the process. Give a brief update where we are this year. Review current year projects, potential projects that might be on staff's radar at this point, and again, this is just very early in the stages. And then allow for any public inquiry, research, suggestions. So the purpose of municipal budget is really to set the levels of service for the municipality. It's an opportunity to counsel to determine what type of services they want and the resources that are needed. By setting the expected revenues, including the call important warrants. It allows us to move forward with a plan in January to execute the services that the council deem necessary. It also gives us a chance to review capital needs and get wants. Capital needs are the services we currently have and to be able to continue to go with them, we gotta. Be replacing and reinvesting in them, wants or maybe new services that are needed and are new pieces of equipment for existing services that my staff's. Assumption may make us more efficient. It also gives us an opportunity to examine funding from alternative sources. So the all important government grants, everything from the gas tax fund for the infrastructure Canada fund. That council recently approved. A couple of weeks ago and making some applications too. There's also other private grants out there, everything from the community foundation. Of course, Kwan is in town, but there's other avenues of grants that are related to government and the town has been. Lucky or to be getting donations from private sources, including the Dunn Foundation this year and the rebuilding of the wellness center. And then it's also important as we move along to review debt levels, that. We can't have everything we want, there's a price for it. And so we have to be continuously mindful of the debt levels. That creating these services will create new debt potentially ten to twenty years that has to be paid off eventually. And it could become a burdensome and that too high debt could lead to decline in services just to manage the debt levels. And of course, to set the mill rate, the council's aware of the needs and things and. We might set services and have come up with a budget to meet a lot of expectations, but if the mill rate is supported is a. You know, five, ten, fifteen cent increase, then we have to work backwards. And determine what is an appropriate mill rate and appropriate services that the citizens are willing to support. So the process, so tonight is the public input session, and I guess the public inputs never closed. But if you have questions or suggestions, feel free to bring them to one of your councillors, the mayor. Or drop off suggestions through email to either Mr. Knop or I, and we can bring it forward for discussion. And then we're working hard to have a first draft of council by August thirty-first, so that's next Monday. Won't be in today's packages, but I know the assistant treasurer Emily Nodden has been working on this and. Has the first draft in mind of you that we'll be going over the next couple of days to get ready to for council's deliberation. Then budget discussions typically weekly, potentially more than once a week. We'll have that discussion probably at the committee level to see. What strategy council wants to take in moving forward on this. And then a final presentation to the public in late October, that's a couple of months earlier than we usually do. But under some new legislative changes that we'll talk about in a minute, it's required. So then staff's goal, not council's staff's goal, is that council will accept it at the regular meeting on November the second. So that gives us a little over sixty days to have this thing put to bed. Then it's filed to the department of environment, local government in mid-November. Within files that reviews it and files it to the department of finance by mid-December. As far as the public is concerned, the tax bills are still coming out of May, or sorry, March, that should be, or a payment in May. Now, there has been changes in legislation, that is why things have been moved back quite a bit this year, moved ahead. In prior years, it all started with the homeowners notices for assessments. And we typically, as the Brunzckers, didn't get that until we got a property tax bill in March. But starting this year, they changed this legislation, so actually in October, we should get a notice of assessment how much our homes are worth. That gives us the ability to appeal and then for the finance department to set it before you get your property tax bill in March. But these new notice of assessments won't have a value for property tax owing yet this time, from what I understand. That it's just to give you a value so you're aware, and if you want to go through the appeal process before the bills are produced, you have that time. So the department of environment, local government, Service New Brunswick will give us the new assessment base in October. And prior years, it was usually mid-November before we got that. And so we could work on the budgets, but we didn't know how much our assessment was growing or falling to give us an opportunity to work with that. And so now they've assured us that by October, about the same time they released the bills. Or the assessment, sorry, to the homeowners, they were releasing it to municipalities. And then the budgets that had to go to government of New Brunswick, it was usually mid to late December and in fact. A lot of cases, the last few years, it was early January before we actually approved a budget to be submitted. But now they're demanding that it be provided by mid-November, so. I guess to keep on the good graces of the province, councils will be going to be committed to getting this thing. Worked through and put to bed by the deadlines. So in St. Andrews, during this council's mandate so far, there has been steady growth. In two thousand and sixteen, there is a. The assessment base was two hundred and eighty-four million and it last year, well this year, I guess. That the assessment base for this year's budget was three hundred and twenty-nine million. Which leads to. Eighteen percent growth over four years. In fact, two years ago, St. Andrews was the number one growth by percentage in all of New Brunswick. But that's a combination of new builds and assessment growth, so where property values could go up due to changing market conditions. That's an average of four point nine percent per year, that's strong growth, especially as you see some of our. Northern communities have lost primary industries, and I'll think of Dalhousie and the NB power. NB power facility that dropped their municipal base by fifteen or twenty percent if I remember. And that would be devastating for a community, so as a community, we've been very fortunate that we've had this much growth. That's given council the ability to reinvest in infrastructure and in some cases expand services. So the two thousand and sixteen mill rate was a dollar nineteen, and that was actually set by the prior council, that the elections were in May of two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and seventeen, council held the rate, but then you saw a steady growth in the rate as. Where you realized you were asked management policies, that we had to pick up the pace on reinvestment in our current capital. So in two thousand and eighteen, it was at a dollar twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen, a dollar twenty-four, a dollar twenty-six in this current year. And there's yet to be determined for two thousand and twenty-one. As you go across the various communities, this moment here, the new. Just to give a general comparison across, like, so you see the cities run anywhere between a dollar forty-three as a loan for Purventon. Up to a high of a dollar seventy-eight for the city of St. John, and again, this was the two thousand and nineteen tax year, not this year. At a similar communities, Chrisbam, Sussex, Woodstock, quite larger than us in. Population, but have similar service levels. The rates run from a dollar twenty-eight to a high of a dollar thirty. More locally, St. Stevens at a dollar fifty-eight, St. George a dollar forty. Cheddyak, again, a community that the population is significantly larger than ours, but in a lot of ways is similar, being a coastal community. That is heavily reliant on tourism, they're almost at a dollar fifty. Grand Bay Westfield, a bedroom community to St. John, who has a larger population. But I would argue less services to offer their residents is at a dollar thirty-seven. And Wrexton, a village kind of in the northeast of the province, which is similar in size to us. Is at a dollar thirty-three, and right now, St. Andrews is at a dollar twenty-six in this year. And the provincial average for those in our group, what I mean groups is villages and towns that are around their size is actually a dollar thirty-five. So St. Andrews is well below the mill rate. I understand the discussion about that our assessments are much higher. But when you look at these mill rates that are substantially higher than ours, there comes a question of. We have to see if the total property tax bill is within a home in St. Andrews, excluding maybe those on the coast. Is actually that much more than those that are in other jurisdictions. So of course, one of the challenges we had this year is COVID nineteen. Which immediately caused a shutdown of services in the middle of March, with the arena and youth center closed any activity. And then it even came down to access to town hall and council meetings was restricted. As you can see, we're still not meeting in person, but that should be changed in the September meeting. But life in general, as we know, it has changed within the town. And we did, and council asked and we did prepare a post-COVID budget. To look at all the changes and to address them, and that was passed in May eleventh earlier this year. Before the town, we had a potential loss of revenue of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And in order to run a balanced budget, we had to drop expenses by three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So this pandemic has created a challenge for council and staff, but I think we've lived up to it fairly well. So for the public, I want you to remember that council only sets the municipal bill mill rate and the BIA rate. That we don't go through and look at assessments on a property by property basis, we are told how much our taxable assessment net base is. And that we accept based on mill rate on that, as most people know, the assessments are delivered by Service New Brunswick. The provincial portion of property tax is set by the government of New Brunswick. And none of that money returns to St. Andrews except through maybe infrastructure grants and things, but. We don't get a provincial portion of it sent to that means. We also have to remember that outside of residential properties, there's rates and classifications for all other types of properties. Again, the town has no jurisdiction or say in that, it's all run at a provincial level. And the town just deals with that at their level. Now, some other challenges that we've run into as a town is the infrastructure deficit. Basically. Prior to two thousand and twelve, municipalities weren't doing a very good job in recording what infrastructure they had. Whether it was above ground or below ground and saving money to reinvest in it. For the town of St. Andrews, once you see a copy of future budgets that are becoming in the next couple of weeks. You'll see that we should be making over the next five years, an average investment of two point five million dollars, just in the general operating fund. And even more in the utility. And as of today, there's about four point six million dollar deficit in the utility fund. On infrastructure that should be replaced because of their age. Now, I can assure people that safety is still a primary concern, there are no safety issues with any of this stuff. But a lot of this infrastructure was put in more than fifty years ago and is due for replacement. But just because lack of funding hasn't been able to be addressed, it's being addressed as funding allows. And again, we have a lot of aging facilities within town. For instance, we have the W C O Neil Arena, it's over built in the late sixties, early seventies. We've put a million dollar roof in it, but we're trying to repurpose it through adding the wellness center. But it's an old facility that needs to be taken care of. In-ground infrastructure, roads and streets, all that stuff is old and as you, a lot of people will know that their streets part of their houses while still drivable and still safe. They're starting to show spider cracking or breakages and stuff that in a perfect world would be replaced in the next couple of years. But in order to move up our. Cash flow resupplies and plan, you just have to put half a million dollars a year into that alone. And of course, there's always requests for more services. The new wellness centers being is a prime example, that is generous gift to the Dunn Foundation to help make it possible. But we're putting in a gym that wasn't initially planned, we're trying to add more services. And it's going to cost more money for some of these things, the community is certainly in favor of it. But every time we add stuff like this, there's more cost to doing it and we always have to keep that in the back of our minds. There are downloading of responsibilities from different levels of government, and I won't take a lot of time to go through that. But safe to say that. Things that we were doing fifteen years ago when it first started have just crept up as responsibilities from other departments, which fair to say have been shrinking. Have been down to the municipality to either deal with or to oversee and not with any funding to do it. So it's been a challenge for staff and council and the communities these things come forward. And then as much as I hate to say it out loud, we also have to be concerned about COVID in twenty twenty-one. They're saying we'll be moving to a green zone until there's a vaccine ready and depending on who you talk to, that could be another two years in the making. And so staff is going to have to think about that as well as council and looking into a budget, one way or the other, and manage it if it comes to be. So your tax dollars, your tax dollars are spent basically in the following three or four major areas. So administration is the top of twenty-three percent, but besides town halls, that includes council expenses, legal costs. The land development cost and hiring the regional service commission as well as odd and things. So that currently takes about a quarter of your budget. Police and fire is about seventeen percent of the budget, and that's with the volunteer fire department. And so that's a fairly high expense for a town of our size. Public works from snow removal to all the work they do throughout town is about seventeen percent. And then heritage and culture at sixteen percent. And debt servicing, just to so you're aware, is currently at about fourteen percent. To supplement, we always have to keep, fluctuate up and down a little bit, but the maximum they like to see on an annual basis is about twenty percent. So major projects that we have been going through this year and some are completing, some are on the way. One of course is the wellness center, which is still under construction, but actually the finishing touches will be made on it over the next six to eight weeks. So this is what you see here with the painter coming out. Will actually turn into a great opening and things in mid to late October as the projects completed. Before council, at the September eighth meeting, will be to continue with the restoration of the Katie's phone causeway. Most of us have seen this damage from the storm, but just to give you an idea of how great the situation is out there, it's been closed since April. And that'll hopefully be restored this fall. New plow truck takes six or seven months for delivery, so it was ordered back in the May, I believe. And it will be ready by November, this is a sick, the truck we're getting will be similar to this one, it's a large dump truck that. Will be sandered and bow ready to go for this winter. And then asphalt replacement, this is a fresh piece of asphalt that we get earlier this year along Joe's Point Road. And Edward Street, and that's a continuing process, it'll be a long time to catch up and important part of. Our continued services for the area. So potential projects that are on councils and staff's radar that we've talked about. At least initially and will be discussed more in depth as we move forward, are things like the warp and market square refurbishment. The Spectre, of course, is one that you saw and the council had asked staff to go back and revisit it, which we will. But for the time being, this is the proposal that's on the table and so on, and was presented a couple of weeks ago. Council also is looking at upgrading, upgrading Joe's Point and Brandy Cole Road. Few years ago, sorry, a couple of weeks ago, they approved the coastal link trail portion through St. Andrews. And as part of that, they also want to upgrade the facilities, which includes parts of these roads. So for those that have traveled it, whether by foot or by car or by bike, know that the chip seal is a pretty bad, the chip seals are the asphalt. Things in pretty bad shape along there, especially beyond. The turnoff there through the golf course, and it hasn't been touched in fifteen years or better. And so that'll be upgraded if council so desires. There are upgrades to the arena that need to be done, like I said, it's one of our biggest and oldest facilities. Which include, sorry, to go to my notes, is a sidewalk replacement which she had initially, or council had initially approved this year, but it's been deferred. As part of the COVID nineteen response, there is some equipment that is being rehabilitated as we do on an annual basis. A lot of the place plan equipment is still the original, that's have some upgrades and some of the core, it's still in excellent condition. But you still have to do a lot of the rehabilitation work to keep it going. And then one of the projects that will be bringing for consideration is the final phase of window replacements. That about two-thirds of the building have already been replaced and it's actually the dining room, which you can see behind the sign is due and. Other than all the windows will have been replaced in the arena for since two thousand and fourteen. And then another consideration for councils, a parking of rehabilitation at the fire hall. You might not be able to see it on your screen really well, but the fire hall pavement is in pretty rough shape and you've got these big trucks and things going. Or once it starts cracking and breaking your car, it starts disintegrating at a much faster pace, and so that'll be before you as well. And then another item that was before council that has been delayed a year is the courthouse painting. So all four outside walls plus the heartwork on top and the overhang are all due to be repaired. Repainted, we are putting in an application to the built heritage fund. That potentially could pay for half of it, and so that's why we deferred it for a year. The painting currently isn't not bad a shape, and if we can get half the finances, we determine if it could survive one more year while we wait forward on that. So moving forward after tonight. We'll have a first draft of council on Monday, Monday. Probably hand delivered. Then we'll have open council meetings to discuss the budget, so we've been working on a five-year process. We haven't determined when those meetings are, but they do typically take place weekly. And then we're hoping suggestions by the public on improvements to services or new project considerations. We try to keep track of things as they come through our door throughout the year, but if you have something that you think you would be a great addition to the town, please come in and let us know. Even better if you have a priced out, but if not, we can look at it, bring it to council and probably provide a ballpark figure for executing this service or this investment. And again, local government, this is your opportunity to make suggestions to improve the well-being of your community. I am asking that community groups with large ash are get requested by the end of September. I'll work with the assistant treasurer and the clerk to send out letters to those groups that have gotten funding in the past and they can think about it. It's unfortunate with this. Change in the planning of the province and getting these things done, most of these groups are barely getting through the summer, now being asked to reconsider. What they'll be doing in twenty twenty-one, but for council to give requests basically over a thousand dollars or more. Really need to have it before their plate so we can see it coming for them. Council, that's really all I have for tonight's presentation, is just a real brief introduction to the process. And I'm open the floor to any council questions and I'm not sure if there's anyone that's joined us or not by the public, but certainly any input they may have or questions, we'll take them.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Council, any questions for Mr. Spear?
Yes, your worship. I was wondering if we ever receive the breakdown, I know eighteen percent over four years. Growth is impressive to say the least, but I was wondering if we ever receive a breakdown that shows us. The percentage of that that's from new builds and the percentage of that that's through assessment growth.
We do not, I can probably ask for that, but it's not displayed. It's not. Thank you Paul for cutting me off, it's not given to us in our annual. Our annual reports about our assessment base, they just group everything together, but I think the request is made to Service New Brunswick locally, they could probably give us that breakdown.
With, just to follow up to that question, sorry councillor, I know you have one as well, but would it be possible to request that breakdown? The reason that I'm asking for it is I know that council has set kind of a revenue growth rate that the town needs to do. In order to be sustainable, and we have over-delivered that throughout the four-year mandate, now we're in our fifth year. But the four-year mandate, we over-delivered that, and where I'm going with that is, first of all, to congratulate all of council. And the public, because that's not something that's easy to do, but, but we did do it and it is vital to our community to do that, but. Where I'm going with that is, I think that for one reason or another, that the town of St. Andrews has been. I don't want to say targeted, but certainly has been identified as a community in which the province can lean on. In order to provide a larger tax base for the province of New Brunswick. I do think that a number of our residents have seen high assessment growth rates. And I think it's time for us to dive into that a little deeper. I don't want to make speculations to why that is, but I think we needed explained a little bit, because I'm not a hundred percent convinced, pre-COVID I'm speaking. That the actual sale values of our home went up proportionally. I think, to be honest with you, we might have been a little bit of a, of a cash grab for the province, and I think we should dive into that to protect homeowners of St. Andrews. And if we are anticipating to be that again this year, is we should take that into consideration when we set our mill rate.
Worship, councillor group?
Yeah, two, two things. So I want to thank Mr. Spear and the staff, you've done a really good job getting off the mark early. And, and I really appreciate the fact that we're, we're off, we're off to a very, very good start. The, the one thing I would add is, is I think it might be useful for council. If we, we had some sort of a perspective, you've identified it in your presentation, that the, the. The amount of debt for the town is an issue, I think it might be useful for council if we had some perspectives on that. And so the council could maybe set a target for what kind of debt load is acceptable to council. And, and that, that, that I think would be, be helpful. As far as projects go, one, one project that has been identified to me by a couple of different residents, in fact. I have one resident that slipped and fell on the bricks we have in Market Square and in front of town hall. And actually broke a couple of ribs, he could have very easily sued the town, he did not. But the type of bricks that we have out there are not the right kind of brickwork that we should have for. But the type of bricks that we have out there are not the right kind of brickwork that we should have for walking on. And I think that's that's a health and safety issue that we may want to identify as as a project moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council group. Anyone else on council want to comment?
I'll hear your worship. Thank you. I'd like to echo the deputy mayor's comments on on perhaps not making any mill rate increases this year or certainly taking pause before we do. If for Mr. Spear, would you mind going back to slide number nine? I'm having difficulty reading my mind and we only went, we didn't go through all of the pie chart. We got down to fourteen percent. So we did, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
We did twenty three, seventeen, seventeen, sixteen, fourteen, and then I just don't have my reading glasses. I couldn't get below the fourteen. But there's a few more.
Well, there is, I guess I, everything's lower than that, I just kind of skip by, but right now, capital makes up about fourteen percent of their budget. And to give the community an idea, that's about five to six hundred thousand dollars with a tax revenue that can go towards capital investment that have a two million dollar need. So we either got a burn or hopefully a level of government's going to supply the rest. So that's one of our biggest challenges. Three percent on economic development. That include everything from the V I C to investments with the chamber and things like that. A little bit of advertising and that's about it.
I just couldn't see some of the smaller slivers there. Would it be possible, Chris, to as C A O to to split up the police and fire one? What percent of the seventeen is police and what percent of seventeen is fire? Not necessarily right now, but
Yeah, yeah, that's my problem, yeah.
I don't have my calculator. Thank you. Now, as to Counselor Gru's comments about the square, I see the town, the staff are working hard to to make sure there's no, no little edges and things, but I'm not sure that that we can eliminate all of the all of the trip hazards all up and down the front street. I mean, it's a, it's aging infrastructure. Not sure what we can necessarily do about that except continue to try to fix things up in a reasonable way. Thank you, worship.
Yeah, thank you, Council Gomisho. Anyone else have a comment?
Sorry, just another question is, I think it was part of the presentation and capture it. When, when will we receive kind of that new build and assessment growth rate for the community, like the actual bit for twenty twenty one? Sorry, just, you know, however, year you tell us what the actual growth is of the tax bases, wondering when we can expect, expect that this year. I think it was part of the presentation, but we're earlier than normal, but we need, we need to know that.
Yeah, so it'd be mid October. I'll bring your concerns to Service New Brunswick and see if they can at least come and address the prior years.
That that would be good because in my mind, what I see is we have, you know, the council, you know, revenue growth rate. And then beside that, you have mill rate and beside that, you have the new build growth percentage and then you have the assessment growth rate because we talked about more than one way to get to revenue growth. One would be through new builds and obviously assessment growth, but I think I I think together i- it's too much, too fast, and I think we need to make sure that we know the relationship between one and one and the other one. So I really appreciate the presentation as well. I think it was an excellent job and getting it out earlier is going to be a challenge. Let's be honest, every year it's a challenge, but I like the way that we're getting out in front of it right now.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Okay, I think that's it for council comments. Mr. Knopper, do we have anybody online to comment on the budget?
Through you, your worship, we'll start with Vic Miller. Vic, do you have any questions or comments regarding the budget?
Yes, I was wondering, does the town participate in any type of financial funds for student housing for the college?
Through your worship, sometimes Mr. Miller will sponsor events if requested, but it's actually fairly rare that we've had a request in the last few years. Mayor and council have participated in the opening and things to welcome new students into town. But we haven't had a request from the college for a couple of three years about any type of sponsorship of anything they do at the college.
Just generally speaking, speaking, is there enough student housing available now for the college?
Through your, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Miller, I just wanted to say that on September fourth, members of council are invited to meet with the New Brunswick Community College. We, myself, I look forward to talking about the challenges of the N B C C. I know that there was some classes put on hold for, or courses put on hold for a year or or greater due to COVID, but there was also a number of counts of classes that were were canceled permanently like carpentry, for example. I I did have the opportunity to talk to a student that said at the beginning of last year in hospitality, there was twenty five kids in his class, or twenty five students in his class. A month later, it was down to seventeen. Eight of those students had transferred to the Moncton College because they could not find adequate housing in our community. So in my opinion, there is a major shortage of housing to meet the New Brunswick Community College needs. I don't know if it's because of factors where they've eliminated long term rentals. But I also, it's possible that the students that go to the New Brunswick Community College have changed, maybe not as many local students are attending that that stay with their parents. Maybe there's more international or away students. Either way, what's become abundantly clear is specific to the New Brunswick Community College is we have a major gap and I think that the town of St. Andrews has a role to play in figuring that out in the future.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Knopper, anyone else?
Yep, I will go to Dale Chambers. Dale, you have the Florida council. If you have any questions or comments regarding the budget.
Yes, hi, thank you, Paul and Mayor, counselor and staff. The question I have or the concern is I know our mill rate is low and our assessments are high, but we have to take into consideration that non-primary households are taxed doubled. So if you increase the mill rate, that increases their double taxation. And I know we could have had wonderful families and retirees in the future coming and they see that double taxation and they balk a bit. So if we could say, hey, we have the lowest mill rate, that that's sort of a selling feature, even though their property taxes are doubled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it's important to note, your worship, that I'm sure Dale's aware, but the double taxation, the town of St. Andrews doesn't receive any of it, so it, there is some major gaps in taxation in the province of New Brunswick.
Um, yes, Deputy Deputy Mayor, I'm aware of that, but the people that move in are not. They just see the double taxation.
Correct. Ms. Chambers, do you have any other questions for council?
No, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dale. I will go to the next one. Ms. Lyndy Townsend, do you have any questions or comments for council regarding the budget?
No, thanks. I just listened in. Thank you very much. You guys did a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.
Okay.
Just going to go to Facebook here, your worship. Just give me one second. Just want to reload to make sure that we've got anybody who's asked any questions. Through you, your worship, there's no further questions from Facebook on the budget at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knopper. I think we will move on to the five year designated highway program. We have a motion in relation to that. And again, we're going to have to look to somebody to put that on the table for us. I think
It's mine. Yeah, Public Works. Two zero zero seven zero three. Date is August twenty first, twenty twenty. And it's a five year designate designate highway program. So the background is, in continuation with the ongoing storm water management improvements and active transportation initiatives initiates initiatives, sorry. Being undertaken by the town of St. Andrews C D C L Limited is recommending further roadway and drainage improvement improvements be made to Route one twenty seven designate N B D T I highway. Or D T one, sorry. Please consult the attached background information for review. And there was a lot of information there about what improvements are going to be. And the motion is that council move to improve the five year designate highway program from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Council Acogee. Can I have a second or for that motion, please, so we can discuss it?
I'll second it.
Yeah, thank you, Council Group. All right, council, Mr. Spear, can I call on you just to answer me one question that I think the public, if any, are listening in, would be interested in. What's the actual financial breakdown between us and the province in relation to this particular program? If it's approved by the provincial government.
You're on mute, Chris. Sorry, Mr. Spear.
Sorry about that. Thank you, worship. Yeah, it's a good point and the total ask is actually close to three million dollars and a hundred percent of it will be paid by the province of New Brunswick for improvements. Yeah, so it's it's a great program if it's approved.
Hey, great. Thank you, Mr. Spear. I thought the public would want to know about that before we start talking about the big numbers.
Your worship?
Yes, Council Group.
Just a clarification in Mr. Spear's background, and I think the public should be aware of this. Mr. Spear indicates that unfortunately, since two thousand and eighteen, there has not been any funding available. So it hasn't really moved very much. So we've, we've gone through a drought for the last at least two years. Is there any indication that we're going to be seeing any money in the future or is this drought expected to continue for the foreseeable future?
All I can say, counselor, is we get a new government coming in after a COVID pandemic, so I've got concerns that the reality that we'll be getting this money. I will say that St. Andrews hasn't been picked on, that very few projects across the province has been approved in this. It seemed this particular fund dried up across New Brunswick. But having said that, what everyone has to realize is these aren't ten of St. Andrews roads, they're access roads that are owned by the province of New Brunswick. So it's a lot cheaper for them to fix them now than get them to such a state that's going to cost twice as much money in ten years when everything is just destroyed right down to the base. So to answer your question, I'd say there's about a fifty percent chance we'll see approval approval of this amount, but it won't happen till after Christmas, probably well into the, into the next government's mandate.
Thank you, Mr. Spear.
Uh, your worship, just a just a quick question for the C A O. The turning lane on out by the Marine Science Drive, is that on the, on the plan or was that taken out of the plan? It's not clear.
It's currently on the plan, so it'd be a left hand turn coming from the town heading towards Bayside, turn left down, down Brandy Cove, there's Marine Science Drive.
Good, thank you, Chris.
I I think there's just one thing and maybe to bring to the public's attention that the prior budget to this proposal had including sidewalks along both sides, but the cost was astronomical. I think that might have been some of the concern. So the current plan is continuing the belief of the, you know, the paved shoulder with a one one, one and a half meter lane for pedestrians and bicyclists, which is kind of a compromise, but it's still is preferable to what we have there now.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Spear. Anyone else wish to comment? I have one comment and it's a real simple one. If you don't ask, you don't get. We don't know whether they're going to approve it, but if we don't submit a comprehensive plan, we won't have any chance of being approved, so. I'm not, I'm not trying to tell council what to do, but and if this isn't the right time to approve it, I'm okay with that too, but but we should, we do need to move ahead to see whether or not we're going to get there. The one thing I should mention to the public, I think Mr. Spear jumped in here if I'm wrong about this, but the big advantage the province has with us is they provide the money, but we provide all the engineering support and all the administrative support in terms of tendering and supervising the construction and paying the bill with their money, so they are getting off easy here with not having to have provincial civil servants do all of that because their road is inside of our municipalities. That's pretty much it.
That is dead on, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Okay, council, any more comments? Do you think we're ready for the question? All in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Spear, for that. And council. All right, I think we're getting down to, I guess, the question period. We have questions about the budget, but are there any questions about that last section?
Through you, your worship, I will take it to Vic Miller. Vic, do you have any questions or any more questions or comments on tonight's agenda? Seeing Vic has not, Dale Chambers, do you have any questions or additional questions for council for tonight?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. I'll go back to Vic now that he's on off mute. Vic, do you have any other questions related to the tonight's agenda?
That one thing on the taxation, does the RV park down there at Indian Point or at the other end of St. Andrews, do they pay property taxes?
Through you, your worship, camp and itself pays property taxes and the government has come up some type of formula now where it's based on the number of campsites, but as for the units themselves, no, they don't.
And just one comment about, you know, when there's so many people that own property in St. Andrews and they pay double taxes on property and stuff. And some other places, you know, outside of Canada, what they do is have a homestead exemption, you know, if you own the home and live in it, you get like a twenty five or fifty thousand dollar reduction, you know, instead of the whole double taxation thing. And I'm sure there's a lot of thought that goes into, you know, why it's got to be double and everything, but it's just an alternative that seems to work in some other places where it's not, it's like Dale was talking about. People really take into consideration what is going to cost the own property in the province, but just a comment. Thank you.
Through you, your worship, I just checked Facebook and we don't have any further questions or comments regarding tonight's agenda, so we can proceed as you wish.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knopper. Counselors and deputy mayor's comments, anyone have comments for us? And I likewise want to thank everyone for tonight. Are we, are we going into closed session, Mr. Knopper? We are. I will then look for a motion to go into closed session. Yeah, thank you, Council Acogee and a second or? Okay, thank you, Council Group, Michelle. All in favor going into closed session, please signify. Hey, any opposed? We'll go into closed session and Mr. Knopper, you will take care of the general public.
Yeah, just give me one second here.
A member from the St. Andrews detachment for a volunteer service award, a community service award to be awarded on September twelfth.
Thank you, Council Gomisho. Can I have a second or for that motion?
I'll second it.
Fine, thank you, Council Harrison. Seconded. Comments, council?
I think I'd prefer it just be called a service award. I I I think the mayor is not wrong in the whole volun, like that distinction. But, you know, I I would just say we just call it whatever, a ser- But, you know, I would just say we just call it whatever, a ser, just that, a service award.
Community service award.
Yeah.
Your worship, I would.
Cut out.
Add to the discussion quote. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, no, I'd just like to echo what the mayor had said. The, the September the 12th. The purpose of the September the 12th event is to honor the volunteers within our community. There's no doubt that Corporal Hanson has done a lot of wonderful things for the community. Is, is well-deserving of some sort of a service award. I just think that it should happen at a separate time so that we can honor the volunteers. And not have it confused with a service award for a well-deserving member of the RCMP detachment. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else want to comment, council? Hey, I'll call the question. We have a, we have a motion on the table. I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 All of, any opposed? Okay, did everybody vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was it four to one, your worship?
Okay, motion is carried.
Thank you, worship.
All right. Now I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Great.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
Paul, I'll bring my computer in tomorrow. I'm waiting to get my.